Good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 17th regular meeting for the Board of County Commissioners. At this time, we will have a presentation of colors by Mount Pleasant Air Force Junior ROTC from Mount Pleasant High School. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
in Midland to do our invocation.
Let's bow for prayer. Holy Father, we do not enter into your presence this evening as Democrats or Republicans or from any denominational or ethnic group, nor do we come as beggars. We come because you taught us to be anxious for nothing but in everything by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, to let our requests be made known unto you. And you promised that the peace that passes all understanding would guard our hearts and minds through Jesus Christ our Lord. So we give you thanks, that we are blessed and highly favored. We thank you that our potential is as great as our faith and that our provision is sufficient. Your presence is sustaining, your preparation is secure. We ask for wisdom and understanding as we move through every task and every decision of life. We realize that the outcome of every situation will be determined by our perspective. So, Lord, help us to labor diligently, serve willingly, trust completely, love supremely, and help us to see in every difficulty an opportunity for service. And we pray in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Will you please remain standing? At this time, we would like to observe a moment of silence for Betsy Carpenter. Betsy was a leader in the community for animal rights, and she passed away, and she and her presence will be greatly missed in Cabarrus County. So, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you all. Please be seated. And also, if you have cell phones at this time, if you don't mind, please put it on vibrate or turn them off for the meeting. We would like to recognize the members of the Junior ROTC group that presented our colors tonight. So you please come forward and tell us your name, your rank, what grade you're in, any information, some information about you. And then, I would like for you to exit to your left, my right, and Commissioner White has a county pin that he would like to give to you.
Thank you. I'm Cadet First Lieutenant Timothy Vincent. I'm 11th grader in Mount Pleasant High School, and after high school, I plan on going to the military service.
My name is Cadet Cody Lor. I'm a Staff Sergeant, and I'm a sophomore. And after high school, I want to go into the military for law enforcement.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Cadet Caitlin Culp. I'm a captain, and I'm a junior. Plan after high school is to go to college and a degree in biology.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Cadet Alicia Shepherd, and I'm a First Lieutenant, and after school, I plan on getting a four-year degree somewhere after college.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first item that we have tonight is the approval of or correction of the minutes that are found on page four in your agenda.
I move for approval.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next up, we have approval of the agenda, and as you will note, there are a few changes. There are some additional closed session items and some supplemental information that has been added. So, at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Tonight, one of the things that we like to do is to be able to recognize excellence in our community, and as many of you know, have noticed, there's a bunch of fellows down here all dressed in the same attire. And so, we would like to celebrate your excellence tonight. Julie, I don't know if you're coming up first or how you want to do that, but we want to recognize the Odell Eagles football team.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, we are thrilled to be here tonight to not only celebrate a regional and state championship, but also a national title. The kids have worked really hard. We had 24 players, five coaches, and over 80 family members that all went to Florida to cheer them on. So, it was a great time, and it's been an incredible journey with incredible coaches. So, I just wanted to take a moment to kind of walk you through our journey a little bit, and we hope you enjoy the pictures as much as we did participating in the national championships. They won the regional and state championships in November. All I can say on that one is it's priceless. And these are just some various shots of the game. This is Coach Walker. They look kind of worn out, don't they? They played three games in five days. This is our head coach, Coach Paget. What a shot there. Coach Graves in Bradford. And they really represented the Concord and Cabarrus County well. Had a great group of parents that were with us, and we had quite a cheering section with cowbells and all. They look a little bit happy there. They've also had a string of media appearances, and I'll let Coach Paget tell us a little bit about that. They appeared on the Fox got game with Bruce Snyder. Also, they were honored by the Carolina Panthers. They had their own press conference and a tour of the stadium. Of course, Cam Newton wasn't present, and they were kind of disappointed. However, they met head coach Ron Rivera, so that was exciting. And we appreciate the community's support, and at this time, I'd like to introduce our head coach, Kenneth Paget.
Thank you for your time. We do appreciate everything that Cabarrus County's done for us with providing the fields at Cox Mill Elementary School and the parks that y'all have opened up for us. We do greatly appreciate it. We began the journey in July, played an eight-game season, went to the champion or to the playoffs, which has continued on for another two weeks, won the state championship, consequently winning the regional also, and from there, went to Florida. I can't say enough about our parents. In basically a three-week period, they raised over $10,000 to help pay for the way for the kids to go and pay for miscellaneous things that we did while we were down there. We did stay close to Disney, so the kids did get to go to Disney and enjoy their time there while we were in Florida. As they said, we played three games in five days. The kids did outstanding. They peaked at the right time. They played as a complete team, no matter what position or what situation they were put in, they did their, they did what they were taught to do, made the tackles, made the blocks, and we won the games. It was just an outstanding season, great group of kids and great group of parents. Let me introduce my assistant coaches. Coach Walker. Coach Fitzgerald. Coach Graves.
Coaches, y'all need to come on up here.
Not time to be shy.
Yeah, I can't imagine you were shy before, but want to make sure we get you on TV cameras.
My defensive coach, Coach Bradford, could not be here tonight. But like I said, this was huge commitment by these parents, huge commitment by these kids. Like I said, we've been playing since July, so it was a long, long season for all of them. And let me introduce the kids.
Yes, what we would like for you to do for all the players, when you come up, if you will go over this way, and Commissioner Carruth is going to come down, and we want to make sure you all have a county pin, okay? So, he'll give you the county pin. If you have a little team spirit. And tell us, I don't know, does everybody go to the same elementary school? Okay. Tell us what school you go to.
David Cox Elementary.
And what position you played.
Safety.
Thank you very much. Over here to your right, my left.
Cody Klein, Odell Elementary, and I play running back.
Brandon Graves, I'm Charlesy Booger Elementary School, and...
What position did you play?
Nose guard.
Okay, thank you.
Sam Walker, Weddington Hills Elementary School, and I play tight end.
Thank you.
Trevor Paget, I go to Booger Elementary. I play quarterback and defensive end.
Thank you.
Noah Waller, First Assembly Christian School, and right guard.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gurley, Booger Elementary, and defensive line.
Thank you.
Randy Gillespie, Cox Mill Elementary, defensive line linebacker.
Thank you.
Milo Polkins, Weddington Hills, and...
The position you played.
Well, lineman for defense and offense.
Thank you.
Michael Fitzgerald, Northwest Middle School, left offensive tackle and defensive end.
Thank you.
Dalton Fitzgerald, Booger Elementary School, and I play corner.
Thank you.
Deontay Lucenti, Highland Creek Elementary, and I play fullback and kicker.
Thank you.
Peyton Gates, I play defensive line, and I go to Cox Mill Elementary School.
Thank you.
Joey Guarino, and I go to WR Odell Elementary School, and I play outside linebacker on defense.
Thank you very much. And if we can get, Julie, if you can get them all to come back in here one more time. Just right up here in the middle. That's good. Yeah, y'all can smile now. I noticed that you really are guarding the trophy, so...
Are you...
I mean, I just kind of thought like, you know, you just want to make sure nobody else got to touch it or something like that. I didn't know if it was good luck or something. From all of the county commissioners, I mean, if you guys want to add anything, I know that Commissioner White had said something originally when y'all, before you were going to Florida. From all of us, we'd like to say thank you so much. You have put a great face on Cabarrus County. You show what hard work can do, because I don't think that you were the favored team to win when you were down in Florida, but you all worked so hard together. You have great coaches and great parents, and we appreciate you and everything that you did, and congratulations. Thank you all very much. For all of you that were so kind to be here for standing room only, I think you've got some seats now. Next up, we have informal public comments. I have two cards for tonight. First, Jason Osterich, if you'll come up, please, and give us your name and where you live. We're familiar.
Yes. My name is Jason Osterich. I live at... Oh, can I wait for the thing to come up before my time starts?
That may be the best I'll do.
Yeah.
On the bottom right, you can change the zoom.
Okay.
And the minus.
Okay, well, that'll be the whole picture. I'm here to speak against the potential tax increase in Cabarrus County property tax rates and ask this commission to do the right thing for the county citizens and to live within its means like the rest of us. A ridiculous idea of revenue neutrality has been promoted by this commission for several months. In these tough economic times, property values have fallen, and therefore, each citizen's property tax obligations have rightfully been reduced. Yet, this county is unwilling to accept this economic reality. Instead, this commission has put forth a plan that although everyone's property values have fallen, they somehow should be responsible for paying a tax amount based on an all-time high property value established in 2008, and thus, the tax rate needs to be increased. Revenue neutrality is nonsensical for two reasons. First, probably everyone in this room wishes we could be revenue neutral to 2008. Everyone here was probably doing a lot better in 2008 than now, but we don't get to magically decide that we earned what we earned in our best revenue year. Instead, we all have had to make hard choices and reduce our expenditures to match our revenue. Second, revenue neutrality is wrong because it is completely inconsistent with the commission's previous handling of this issue. In 2008, when higher property values led to increased revenues, the commission did not reduce the tax rate in order to remain revenue neutral. Instead, the tax rate remained the same, so the commission could take more money from us citizens. Included in that budget was a statement that, and I quote, "Using the formula mandated by state law, the revenue-neutral tax rate for Cabarrus County is 52 cents. The proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2008-9 is 63 cents, which is the same rate as the current year. It kept it exactly the same." Yet, now in 2012, when property values have declined, the consistent behavior is to leave the tax rate unchanged, just as in 2008, but that is not your plan. The 2011 budget states, "To offset the reduction in value of the tax base, a revenue-neutral tax rate of 70.5 cents is proposed for fiscal year 2013." This commission has shown time and time again that when faced with similar events, it takes inconsistent action in order to make more money from the citizens. The chart shows that when property values increased, the per-square-foot base rate increased equally, resulting in the commissioners taking more money. Yet, when property values declined, the per-square-foot base rate did not equally decline, resulting in more money being taken from the citizens. Similarly, when property values went up, the tax rate remained resulting in the commissioners taking more money. Yet, when property values declined, the tax rate will go up, resulting again in the commissioners taking more money. The only thing that is consistent in your behavior is the consistent decision to take more and more money from the citizens of Cabarrus County. Why can't you just do the right thing for the people of the county? All five of you ran as Republicans, yet the majority of this board acts like tax-and-spend liberals.
Hey, I also have a card for Manuel Kaiser. Hello, Mr. Kaiser. If you'll state your name and where you live, please.
All right. I am up here for two companies asking me to kindly speak to you about the vessel school project, and they'd like to be heard if some discussion would go on about what might be the outcome of it. And also, if there's any studies been done about the asbestos and the timeframe of what we'd have to be able to have to do to figure out your plans and what would be the restrictions on the property after it's properly disposed of.
Okay, do you have comments from, you said you represent two companies?
City Savage of Charlotte and C&amp;M Recycling of Charlotte.
Okay, and...
We just want to be, kind of, commissioners would carry discussion on, so we'd know what would be the next step to take.
Okay, I got you. Okay. Do you have any specific comments, though, that you want to tell us about?
I have none.
Okay. Well, we will talk about that. We're going to move it around in the agenda a little bit, so we will try to answer a few of those questions when we get to that. Thank you. Okay, those are the only cards that I have. Are there, is there anybody else who needed to make comments tonight? We didn't have a card filled out for? Okay. In that case, commissioners, we don't have anything under old business. The next item would be the consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda. It's published.
Just a moment, please.
Okay.
It's okay. Number two, concerning the landfill, I would like to have that removed from the consent agenda and have it become number eight under new business, if that's okay. I would like to see that happen.
Now, I would restate my motion to be, with exception of item F2, which will be moved down to item eight under new business. Move for approval of the remaining items in the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, under new business, the first thing that we have up is planning and development. Kelly Sifford is here, the 2012-2013 home program, public hearing.
This is the public hearing that we're required to hold if we wish to participate in the home program. The home program allows for housing rehab for low-income individuals and families with focus on elderly and disabled. We are projecting approximately $100,000. They haven't released the numbers yet, but approximately $100,000, which would result in two to three, we're going with the lower number just to be on the safe side, two to three, housing rehabilitations. Are there questions?
Okay, any questions?
So, on, you said the priority is given to the elderly and disabled, and...
Correct.
How many people do you have participate in the program each year, would you?
It varies. The program requirements have gotten more difficult with more extensive title searches and things like that that have eliminated some parties from participation. Right now, I think I have probably one or two people in the process of getting approved, and they sit on the waitlist until the funds become available then.
And is there ever a situation where the funds are not used, all of the funds?
Those funds roll over, and like this year, we had some that didn't get expended in the last year because the next project was going to be too expensive to do it in the previous year, so we had to wait for the new funding to come online in order to do that. So, you will see that occasionally, but the funding always gets expended. It's just, it may take a year and a half versus a year. Another problem that has come along occasionally is that the environmental procedures that have to go through, release at HUD, have had problems, and this year in particular, Concord had some problems getting that released from HUD, but other than that, I think that may throw us back three or four months getting started, but the funds roll over, so they all get expended.
Any other questions?
We're just having a public hearing tonight. We're not going to have any vote or anything like that.
Yeah, just a public hearing. The match funds that would be required to participate would be done during the annual budget process, so tonight, we just do the public hearing to see if there are needs that the public would like to state.
Okay. If there's no other comments from the commissioners, this time, I would open up a public hearing for the 2012-2013 home program. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this program? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Next, Randy Bass is here. We have the 5310 elderly and disabled grant funding and also the public hearing for that program.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening. It's that time of year where we are providing our grant applications to both the federal and state government for our grant programs, and we're happy to present the public hearing requests for, actually, three, because I'm going to be up here for a little bit, I guess, for this evening. The first is the 5310 elderly and disabled grant funding. This is going to be applied to help the elderly and disabled transportation grant. As for two years, the funding for this program is designed to meet the special needs of the elderly individuals and individuals with disabilities. And if this is awarded, there is a county match, which we'll be going through the budget process for that as well. So, we ask that you hold the public hearing for this particular grant.
Are there, the commissioners have any questions at this time? You can ask them after the public hearing. Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the 5310 elderly and disabled grant funding transportation. Is there anyone who would like to speak for? Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this program? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. You also need a motion from us to adopt the public transportation program resolution for the fiscal year 2013 elderly and disabled grant.
Make a motion.
Have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next one up is the 5316 JARC grant funding and the public hearing for that.
Yes, ma'am. This is another grant that we're going after, and we've already had this grant in place for a couple of years now. It's been very successful for us. It is a job access reverse commute grant that we've been utilizing, and it's been quite successful, and we're applying again to the Department of Transportation to receive additional funding to extend the grant for another two years.
Okay. We also have to have a public hearing for this grant, so I will open the public hearing for the 5316 JARC grant. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this grant? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We also need a motion to adopt the public transportation program resolution for the fiscal year 2013 JARC grant.
I have a couple of questions. This is the bus system that goes around to the five municipalities, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is the, is there a fee that they pay to ride this?
Yes, sir, there is. It's a dollar, and that was approved in the original process. Commissioners approved a dollar fee for that service for people that utilize it.
Okay. And what times does this bus run?
We operate from 5:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening.
And I know I've seen the statistics on the ridership in the past, but, you know, I've looked at this one and thought about this one for a while, and certainly in the previous agenda item, helping the elderly and disabled, certainly understand that. I just have a problem with this one, spending $360,000 of the county dollars on a program for this nature. I know there's been a dependency created on all levels of government that has been created in the past years. You know, folks have done away with their personal responsibility and rely more on the government, and I think this is just another step in that direction. And, you know, I know we see, you know, government dependence pushed down to us, you know, in various ways where we have to pay here at the county level, but I think this is a way where we can stop what we can, we can do what we can here to stop this and let folks take personal responsibility to get to and from work. I don't think that the county should be responsible for that.
Any other comments?
I just got a question, but if somebody lives, say, let's say they live way out on St. Stevens Church Road, they don't have transportation, their car broke down last week, they have to have transportation to get to work. This is what this provides for a dollar, they can ride and help somebody because if you're, have just started a job or you're in a job where you're only paid minimum wage, it's very difficult for you, if you have a broken-down car, to get that car fixed until you get money to get it fixed. And it simply goes beyond, I think, personal responsibility. I think that, you know, if somebody's got the gumption to want to find some way to get to work, and that's a barrier for them going to work, then I just feel different, I guess, on this, is that this is not a give-me-program. This is a program that is providing assistance to folks that otherwise would probably be sitting at home and would become a ward of the state because they had no means of getting and holding down a job because they couldn't get transportation. I don't have a problem with it. And plus, I know it's part of the grant here is for the Cabarrus Vocational Opportunities Workshop.
That is correct.
And a lot of folks there are incapable of driving a car, but are developmentally disabled, that are able to get to, back and forth to work.
Right, that's a partnership that we've had.
Give meaning to a life there for them, so, okay.
Is this program run through Monday through Friday, or is it seven days a week?
Monday through Friday, sir.
You got any idea how many people are involved in it? How many people you actually pick up on a daily basis?
Yes, sir. Steve Cook, he manages the jar.
In December of this month, we were averaging 90 riders a day.
Ninety?
Yes, sir. 1,795 people in December for an average of 90 a day.
What was the further she picked somebody up and take them to work?
We actually cross into Locust, right at their town center, and have a stop there, come through Midland and into town from there. That's probably the furthest we've.
You know, would we go into Stanley County and pick people up?
Actually, we.
Right on the line?
Yes, sir.
Right on the line.
Because part of us, the county, we could pick up in Locust and still be in Cabarrus County. This is a young lady that has no other way, and we actually go in. We used to pick her up in Midland, and it's, it was a burden on her grandmother who carries her, so we told her we'd come into Locust and pick her up.
Would we pick any up in Mecklenburg?
No, sir.
I think it'd be a travesty if we were to not vote for this. I mean, we're talking about people that are working. You could take 90 people out of work? You've got to be kidding me. It's going to cost us more, and it's not 360,000, it's $180,000 each year.
That's correct.
It's 359 for two years, so it's 180. It's going to cost the county more than $180,000 a year in different services that we'd have to provide than what we pay in 180,000 that provides people to get to work. You're talking about people that are working, you're talking about people that have, feel good about themselves and be able to provide for their families. I think it's a travesty if we vote against it. I'm voting for it. I'd make the motion to support it.
I have a motion and I have a second. Are there any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. The next item that we have is the, also transportation, North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division, Section 5311 Grant for the Fiscal Year 2013.
Yes, ma'am. This is our annual grant that we get from the state and federal government to help us with our operational costs, purchase of equipment, and help supplement our operational costs in all the extra services that we provide, and we're asking that you hold the public hearing and adopt the resolution for this grant.
Okay. This time, I will open the public hearing for the Section 5311 Public Transportation Division Grant for fiscal year 2013. Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against this grant? If you see no one, I will close the public hearing. At this time, I'll take comments from commissioners. If there's no comments, I have a motion to approve.
I approve, I move that we approve the Community Transportation Program Resolution, Human Service Agency Transportation Resolution, as noted.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Okay, the next item is an update on the proposed development at the corner of Union Street and Corbin, and we have Jonathan Marshall.
I'll be introducing this project. Brian King from the Rotary is here, should you have any questions of him. Just for the audience's sake, this project is a proposed project that the Rotary of Concord has come to the county with to develop the corner of Corbin and Union Street South into a public square. There are two basic questions that they, there are two remaining questions, I believe, at the work session, although I'd be happy to entertain any others you may have, as I'm sure Mr. King would, but the two questions related to trash or maintenance and then liability. In terms of picking up trash and maintaining the property during the week, of course, we have staff on hand that are able to do that through our general services. It's the weekend that became the larger issue. There will not be private rental or usage of this, so there will be recognized groups using this, whether that be the Rotary, Downtown Development Corporation, the Farmers Market, there'll be recognized groups. In our discussions, it would be up, it would be the responsibility of those groups to pick up their trash, to clean up after any event that they had. Just as Concord Downtown Development works with the City of Concord on special events, those individual groups will be responsible for that. We would have some type of an agreement they would need to sign, so if they were not doing that, and whether we had some kind of a deposit or whether we just didn't allow them to use it again, we would work through that and trash. So we feel like we can address that particularly as we get into the use of the property and feel like we've addressed it. And the other issue was liability, and there was a suggestion that we contact Chattanooga, Tennessee. Tony Harris, our risk manager, has done that. They have, they are similar to us in that they are, have their, are self-insured with their own liability insurance and did not have to increase that liability insurance. Rather, it was covered, as Mr. Cook has explained, with our liability insurance. It was covered under the existing policy, and they have not had any incidents in the year that they've had it. He also contacted Charleston and Kannapolis. I don't believe he heard back with any incidents with either of those. There is an issue that he had been alerted to with the possible, possibility of water contamination, crystallidium, but this is not a recirculating system. The water that comes out would then go down into a valve into the sanitary sewer, so you don't have that same issue that you would with a recirculating system, so we didn't feel like that was an issue. In addition, Mr. King has submitted a letter from an individual in downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated. They also have a fountain of this type and have not had any incidents with it. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We did meet with them again last week with the Rotary and Downtown Development Corporation and began work on some, what would be a four-party agreement between the City of Concord, Rotary, Cabarrus County, and Water and Sewer Authority, and some of the terms are related to that. So if the commission does wish to move forward, then you may wish to authorize the county manager and county attorney to finalize that agreement. Otherwise, we take any instructions you may have.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the commission?
How about the liability for other people using that space? Say the Farmers Market comes in there, sets up a booth, and it falls over, breaks somebody's leg, who's going to be responsible there?
I believe Mr. Cook may have addressed it better than I, but I believe it's going to fall under our liability insurance.
Certainly, any agreement that we have, whether it be part of the four-party agreement or some sort of an agreement for each user of the property specifically, would carry some indemnification language that would, that would push the liability back onto them.
Other questions or comments?
If I could just make a couple comments about the risk. I know that there was some discussion about that, and of course, I'm going and getting some information, and our risk manager, and of course, I'm not in that role, County Tony is, but in my role as working in risk control and risk management with the State Commissioners Association, we have 60 counties that we carry the liability insurance on throughout the state, and when we do our liability coverage, the primary, and that's not familiar with insurance, you base pricing on exposure, and exposure pretty much across the board for general liability is based on population, population alone, because there's counties out there that have, there's one county, in fact, Transylvania County, to name the county, actually has a waterfall that has been, that was donated to the county last year. They've created a park around, and I would dare say this is to go nowhere near the liability that you would find with a waterfall. But I'm thinking with the, I can understand our concerns about addressing that and the liability, but in the grand scheme of things, when you look at the other things that we have, we have, we have a swimming pool that is in a county park, we've got numerous lakes that are in county parks that, and we have camping, we have cabins, we have, you know, that, other things that take place and sports that take place on county property, you know, county parks, and I just don't, myself, don't see that, there's going to be that big of an issue as far as this is concerned, because I don't see, I guess the fountain is not going to be, you know, propelling water at such a pressure that it's going to create, you know, knock people down or injure folks, so I just don't see where, you know, for me, from my perspective, where it's going to be that big of an issue from a liability standpoint.
Commissioner White?
Yes. You know, I'm in full support of the project, and I will first come out and let everybody's, I've always told, I'm in Rotary myself. I'm not in the Concord Rotary Club, but my hat's off to Brian King and his administration for coming up with this idea, and I think it's a great opportunity for the corner. I think that the concerns that our board has raised in the past, although I think they're important to voice them, I don't think that we should lose sight of the fact that the same concerns that have been raised by this board go with Frankless Park, go with Camp Spencer, go with each park that we have. The difference is, we don't have a water feature sprouting water up in those parks, but we do have a pond, or I don't know what's the definition of a pond to a lake out at Frankless Park, and we have the water, we have the same thing up at Camp Spencer, and we have, you know, so that, I'm really, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact of what it does benefit. It benefits all of us, and it will benefit the county for having this park down there at the corner or this aspect. You know, also, what wasn't mentioned, we got a railroad crossing at Frankless Park. If we're concerned about the water sprouting out at a very low pressure, where are the concerns about crossing a railroad line that's active out at Frankless Park? You know, so let's not lose sight of what we're trying, you know, let's look at opportunities for success, and I think this is a way we can be successful in partnering with the Rotary Club. I think that also, there were some concerns about when something wears out or wears down or some maintenance that needs to be done, and, you know, the, I would be hard-pressed to think that if there is a maintenance issue in regards to replacing an awning or looking at something in the, you know, upfitting it, that we shouldn't go back to Concord Rotary and say, hey, guys, we're thinking about this. Is there some way we can partner financially? Rotary is a great organization that is mantra is service above self, and has a four-way test, and everything you think, say, or do, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build better friendships, will it build goodwill and better friendships, and if it's beneficial to all concerned? They are not going away. They are not going to shirk their responsibility, and they're going to stand up and do what they can to help the county if it becomes a financial issue. I think it's a great opportunity, and I think that we should move forward with this with full support, and I think that they've done their duty in contacting citizens, contacting residents in downtown Concord, and I've been getting emails, I don't know if anybody else has, in full support. I have gotten one that is not in support, but I have gotten, I can't even tell you how many I've gotten in support, and one has been contrary. So I would think that, I think that it's a very beneficial thing. I think the water aspect of it, we're, you know, we don't want to chase that red herring. It is something we need to look at. We have looked at it. I think we have gotten the protection, and I think we move forward with it, and I think we welcome them with a round of applause and say, kudos. Let's see what else we can do out there for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Commissioner Meesmer?
Well, I certainly think it's a good project, and I know there's been a lot of hard work and effort put into this, and I've enjoyed reading through it and seeing what the proposed park is going to be, and I know there was some concerns, and the questions have been answered, and I like the idea, and I'm prepared to vote for it. I've received more emails about this single issue than I have about any other issue since I've sat on this board, and so I appreciate the email responses, and I've tried to respond to everyone, but I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's important to note that there are no Cabarrus County dollars being used to build this. That's going to be private funds, so I think that's important to note, and I appreciate the Concord Rotary taking on this project and this idea.
I do have a question for Mr. Marshall, please. You mentioned that when somebody wants to use the park, and I presume that that is more bigger entities such as the Farmers Market, that we would have to, you know, schedule with them, that it would be a certain time every week, the Arts Council, the City of Concord, if they have an event downtown, those big entities that we're going to work out in agreement with them. However, if it's not the case, so don't anybody go think I'm suggesting this, but if somebody wants to get married on that spot, do they have to call the county and arrange it, or is it a, you show up and there's nobody else there, you can have your ceremony? Because we, and I guess if it's, they have to call? Because we, and I guess if it's, they have to call, then we need to say who's gonna be responsible for handling phone calls. Because in the last meeting, Parks and Rec informed us that it was not going to be their reservation system.
And really, it's not set up for that kind of reservation, so it would not be something we reserve for that purpose. Now, I can tell you, having worked on that end of the building, that those weddings go wherever they want to. And they don't always ask our permission. There's certainly been enough celebrations on our front lawn and the courthouse, the old courthouse, and, and the green area to the side of our building, that they will use it, but that it's not set up for private reservations.
So if somebody wants to use it for a wedding, first come, first served. Go out there, and it's okay.
Promise there won't be a skateboarder out there.
Yeah, that's correct. We, we get, we get requests all the time, and I'm the one that ends up getting the phone calls. So all we do is ask that you put in writing what you're gonna do, what time you're gonna be there. It's not reserved, but then that allows us to alert the people that are in the building, allow the sheriff, alert the sheriff's department, that kind of stuff. It's not to, to stop it or anything else.
Right.
Diane, there's a lot of them who go through Concord Downtown Development, but there are certainly gonna be some groups that would use it, that would not. We actually discussed possibly the contact being through them, but it doesn't really make sense that they, there will be groups that will contact us directly, that typically, you know, do contact Mr. Downs, but could contact any of us in the management office, and we would work through that, but it's not for private reservation.
Okay. If there's a group, such as the farmers market, then we would reserve for them a set time every week when they're, we will work with their leadership to decide that this is a set time every week that they're gonna have access to use it.
We would. Because those are the public uses that are, that are foreseen for this, yes.
And when the farmers market is there for their use, it would be their responsibility to clean up any trash that they generate, or their customers generate as a result of being there.
And we will work out a use agreement to that effect, and certainly add the indemnification language that Mr. Cook suggested.
And if the city has those great concerts that they have on the third Thursday night, and spills over up there, their staff is already cleaning the area, they would also go, we would ask them to have their staff to go up there and take care of that area too.
That's right.
And like, I just, the reason I'm repeating this is to make sure anybody that sees it on TV would understand. And if you want to get the spot for some reason, we would ask that you call the county manager's office, and someone here in, in the county manager's office would write it down. Not necessarily Mr. Downs, but there are a number of people in there, he's not the only one that has a spot in there, would write it down, and maybe we'd have nothing more than a desk blotter to write something down. But if you wanna use it, it's a public place, and, you know, that would be the case. The biggest thing that we would worry about would be these different organizations who would be using it on a regular, kind of regular basis to know that they're planning on using it.
That's right. It is intended, though, as a public square, certainly for people who are downtown, as, and as the activity levels downtown increase, as there's, there is more development with, you know, certainly, foreseeing with the announcements that Concord has made, and we see a lot of use of this.
And I think that it will be used. I just know that there was a comment made about when the county's gonna take care of the trash. And that seems very trivial, but for somebody that lives in this area, you don't wanna have a lot of trash out there. So I'm just repeating. If you are using the area because your children want to have a birthday party there, you need to bring trash bags and clean up your trash. There'd be some receptacles out there, I presume, in your design, but we don't have staff on Saturday and Sunday to go out there and check the trash bags every so often and empty them. So it's kind of, if you use it, clean up after yourself, right?
That's right.
Okay. I just, I know that sounds like I'm belaboring something, but I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, so.
And I'm sure I have one more, just a couple of comments to make, if we're not related to what we're talking about earlier, but being a good project, and I can tell you that, looking at this, I remember back in, being the unofficial historian of the board here, the, back in the spring, in April of 2006, I believe it was, that I attended a three-day conference in Charlotte on urban open space design. And one, and the, so ironically, they had to choose a project, and the project I chose was to somehow or another, because we had just went through a very contentious time with the residents downtown about the Old Tribune building that's set on this corner, that, of creating some kind of open space here, and on, and even down in the valley, down, the little branches down behind the jail, of some way developing it into a greenway and open market area. And so it, I take a lot of pride in seeing this, this occur, because I think that this kind of closes a chapter, and for the downtown, folks that live downtown can see, you know, something coming of this corner after so much that went on in 2005 and 2006 surrounding the construction of the jail. So anyway, with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the park and the development of this corner by the Rotary Club.
Second.
And would you add to your motion to allow the county manager and the county attorney to finalize those details?
I said that, didn't I?
I just wanna make sure.
Okay. I'll send that.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. The next item that we have is discussing the Old Bethel School property. I would like to address, first of all, Mr. Kaiser. One of the things that I think that we do well is when we, for our meetings, we post that on our website. And if you will go to, to our website, at www.cabarruscounty.us, there is a spot towards the top, it says, "I want to..." dot, dot, dot. If you click on that, then you have find, "I want to find" and agenda, and pull up tonight's agenda. And on page 278, or thereabouts, you will be able to find an asbestos report that we have had done on that property, and it's a number of pages. But if you'll look there, you should be able to see the information that we have, based on previous reports that's done. It gives you the square footage of the different buildings and a lot of information on that piece of property. I would also encourage you that you can call here, and actually, the gentleman behind you is Kyle Billiford, and you can talk to Kyle, or he may have a business card to give you. He can probably answer any other questions that you would have about that particular piece of property. Okay? I wanna make sure that you do have access to the information, because it is public Do you wanna make any comments, or do you want me to just?
Either way.
What we would, go ahead.
I was just, Madam Chair, I would just like to recommend that item G6, we have another option that we would like to consider prior to you, to you as a board, adopting a resolution to put it back out on the market. So we would, as staff, would request that you table this until the February work session.
Okay. The county managers were requesting that we table this until the February work session. Are there any discussion from commissioners? I think it's just to get, or I don't know if you need to say, just to get some more information so that we can make a more informed decision on how to proceed with the property. So if that's okay, I would take a motion that this item, or I'll make a motion that this item be tabled until the February agenda work session.
I'd like it.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we are not gonna do any action tonight, and if you will talk to Mr. Billiford, and he can make sure that any questions that you have are answered, and come to the work session in February, you guys do. Come to the work session in February, we'll have a chance to talk more. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Think Cabarrus First Campaign and Budget Amendment, and we have Shannon Johnson, and we have Lori Clay. I don't know who's gonna come up. Lori is, okay. Lori is the chair of the Council for a Sustainable Local Economy Committee.
Thank you.
Great to have you here.
Thank you. I'd like to give you an update on what our council has been doing since its inception in April of 2011. We have elected a chairperson. We have also elected a vice chair. That gentleman is Wayne King. Many of you may know Wayne. We have also established three committees. We have established a market development, an education, and a regulatory committee. We have established bylaws. We held a retreat in October and developed our mission and our goals. Our mission, I'll read it to you. It states, "The mission of the CSLE is to promote the production and consumption of local goods and services, the responsible use of resources, and the removal of regulatory barriers to local business growth through education and community cooperation." The CSLE had a table at the county fair to promote buying local, buying local awareness, excuse me, and the upcoming business seminars. Our education committee developed and held two seminars titled, "So You Want to Start a Business." The first of those was held in Mount Pleasant, and the second in Midland, with what we felt was great success. We have two additional ones planned for Concord on March 22nd to be held at the Davis Theater from 6:30 to 8:30, and in Kannapolis at a location that's still to be determined on March 28th. These seminars will inform the community and future entrepreneurs about what it really takes to start a successful business, and how to utilize all the resources that our region offers to local businesses. The CSLE collaborated with Rowan Cabarrus Community College Small Business Center, Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce, local government, and seasoned local businesses to provide the most relevant information possible to the seminar participants. The regulatory committee, which is our newest forum committee, has planned three open-form events for citizens to come, and have two minutes each to speak about how county regulations have affected their business, both positively and negatively. These listening tours on regulation reform sessions will be held in Kannapolis on February 16th at the Kannapolis Train Station, in Concord on February 23rd at Vintage Motorsports, and on February 28th at Buddy's Restaurant in Mount Pleasant. These sessions will provide local business owners a chance to bring their concerns forward anonymously, so that the CSLE can accurately make the recommendations requested by you, our commission. The regulatory committee hopes to have these recommendations presented to you in July. Our market development committee has recently developed a countywide by-local campaign. Think Cabarrus First Shop, Play, Dine, and Stay will launch at the beginning of February. This campaign includes educating the public, excuse me, about how supporting locally-owned businesses benefit our economy, along with securing, excuse me, along with securing businesses to be part of, of the program and to be listed in the online business directory with the ultimate goal of bringing more revenue and bolstering our local economy. The CSLE is asking the commissioners to approve the suggested budget for the first six months of the program. The budget that you have in your agenda packet includes a nominal fee of $20 for each business to be a member, and this fee is just to cover the cost of printing and advertising. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, any questions? We have before us the marketing campaign and the budget amendment, and I would accept a motion to approve that marketing campaign and the associated budget amendment.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, the next item that we have is we moved from the consent agenda and made item number eight, general services concerning the construction and demolition landfill. Do you wanna comment on that?
Madam Chair, this item as well. We've, we've been working on some background information that we would like to research a little bit further, so that we could get it back to you as a board, and as you make your decision on how to proceed with the landfill. So we would ask that you table that as well until the February work session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table this item until the February work session?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, next, we have appointments to boards and committees. First one is the Fireman's Relief Fund trustees. Let's see. Requested action, a motion to appoint Mike Faggart from Allen, and David R. Blackwelder from Coldwater as Fireman's Relief Fund trustees to complete unexpired terms ending January 31st, 2013. Also, motion to appoint Kelly Whitley from Georgeville, Tim Wooton from Harrisburg, and Michael Gaten from Mount Mitchell as Fireman's Relief Fund trustees for one-year terms ending January 31st, 2013. A motion to appoint Lou Connor from Harrisburg and Jacob Williams from Odell as Fireman's Relief Fund trustees for two-years terms, two-year terms ending January 31st, 2014. And a motion to reappoint Jimmy Morgan from Allen, John A. Walker from Coldwater, Tommy Lauder from Flowstore, Joseph Chandler from Georgeville, Joe Udi from Midland, Bobby Knite from Mount Mitchell, Dale Udi from Mount Pleasant Rural, and Earlene Cox from Rymer as Fireman's Relief Fund trustees for two-year terms ending January 31st, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next up, we have appointment to the Cabarrus County Youth Council. We have, an application was received from Wells King. For the youth council, he attends Covenant Classical School and is recommended for the vacant at-large position on the council for a two-year term ending February 21st, 2014. Do I have a motion to appoint Wells King?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we also have in our packet a number of reports for information, and as always, we'd like to ask our citizens to submit applications for county boards and committees. And there are a number of really good boards that we need, we need vacancies. The Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee has four vacancies. Agricultural Advisory Board, Animal Protection and Preservation Advisory Committee, Concord Planning and Zoning Commission, and ETJ Position Council for a Sustainable Local Economy. And you just heard tonight all the things that they're planning to do, so I know they would like to have some more people on their board. Harrisburg Fire Advisory Board, Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We have five vacancies on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, the Parks Committee, and we need someone from Cox Mill High School to apply to join the youth council. So we encourage our citizens to get involved and to apply to serve on these different committees. At this time, we have Section J, which are general comments by the board members. I think Commissioner Carruth, you had?
I had a couple of things, if we could, to share. One of them is for this board's information, I was contacted today by the Nelson Dollars Office at the legislature, and I have been asked to serve on a subcommittee appointed by the Health and Human Services, Joint Health and Human Services Oversight Committee, to, who is looking at different ways to provide governance for the new LME structures across state for mental health. So I'll be attending first meeting of that next Tuesday afternoon in Raleigh. Business should be a couple of months in length to do that, but they will be coming up with, with the ways to look at how to do governance, because as you well know, the, with PBH growing, if we keep the board with four members from each county, then we'll soon end up with a board that's half the size of the legislature. So they're trying to come up with new ways and look at how that will do that. So I will be representing the, pretty much the commissioners across the state on that committee to help, you know, devise what would be the best strategy for that. The other thing I wanted to add, and just to announce, or just to make people aware of, and there's a website you can go to, and it's called Samaritan'sFeet.org. And in this, you can read this whole story there to make, to kind of keep things short. Samaritan's Feet was started by a former, a former NBA player several years ago, who is from Ethiopia. He did not own a pair of shoes until he was nine years old. But some, one day, a missionary showed up in his little village and put a pair of shoes on him. And that motivated him so much that he became, and actually, later came to the States, went to college, and then landed at playing in the NBA. What this program does is actually use local nonprofits and churches to do, and to basically set up an event where children are, come in on, for half a day, and they can come in and get a free pair of shoes and clean socks, and get their feet washed. And the, our church did that this past Saturday, as over a hundred kids came to be fitted with new shoes. And it's, I think, a tremendous thing community-wide, for maybe to look at something in the future, because it's a tremendous program, and it's something that's done without, again, one of those things is done without government dollars, a totally nonprofit, and it's just people helping people. And it's what we've gotta get back to in this country, and with all the things we have going on right now. So just wanted to let, know about that, and if you get a chance, like I say again, it's Samaritan'sFeet.org.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Meesmer, do you have any comments? Commissioner White?
Yes. CHA, Cabarrus Health Alliance, was selected to serve as the lead agency on 11-county Regional Community Transformation Grant Project to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. This project is, it's gonna be a, it'll be a target policy system, is target policy systems and environmental changes in the areas of tobacco, healthy, healthy eating, and active living. My hat's off to Dr. Pilkington and his staff for getting awarded this contract. It's, it's very important, and I know that they do a very good job that kind of flies under the radar, and we don't hear about them enough, but, but they've got a- and we don't hear about it enough, but, but they've got a very good project going on here, and it, they're reaching out to a lot of people throughout the community, so great, great job by Health Alliance.
Mr. Burge?
I don't have a question.
Okay, then at this time, the board will convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A, three, four, and five, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, to discuss matters relating to the location expansion, or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, and to establish and/or to instruct the public body staff on negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by our own behalf of the public body in negotiating the amount of compensation and other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment agreement, and I would ask Mr. Cox to join us in closed session, and he's the only one that we need to ask, okay?
I'd make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, also, I need to have a motion, we must recess this meeting, because we have our work session coming up, so I'd like a motion, I'm sorry, do we do that after closed session?
We are a retreat.
We need to recess after.
After.
After closed session, I'm sorry, I was jumping the gun, so, thank you all very much for coming, we appreciate your attendance tonight.